Welcome to the City of Daily City Recreation Commission meeting today on Tuesday, September 22. Visit Daily City's virtual meeting website to watch the live stream of this meeting and submit comments on agenda items online at the website. bit.ly/dailycity22. Please note the virtual meeting website will only be available during the meeting. And we have a COVID-19 announcement regarding public meetings pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order. And 25,000 members of the Daily City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream and to submit comments through the virtual meeting website and/or submit public comments via email prior to the public meeting. To submit a comment and writing, please email active@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by 4pm will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Comments received after 4pm will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission members for the public meeting. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating should call the office of the city clerk at 991-8078 as soon as possible. And this meeting is now called to order. And first, we'd like to do the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
And next up on the gender vocal.
Chair Luna?
Present.
Vice Chair Landos. Commissioner Flamenco?
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Present.
Commissioner Pastor?
Present.
Great. And next is the approval of tonight's agenda for September 2020. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'd like to enter the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
A second?
Yep, my second.
Great. And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As next up, approval of our minutes from July 28, 2020, our last meeting.
If I can interject, I apologize there, the meeting was not a quorum, so my apologies, that was my mistake on the agenda.
Okay, so we can cross that off the agenda. Moving on to the director's report.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to have two presentations, one both by Edgardo Balanos and his crew. The first one up is the Volunteen Leadership Program, and both of these were on the agenda for July. Because we wanted you to kind of get a taste of what was happening in the summertime, but because our July meeting didn't have a quorum, we're bringing you some great news and great information in September. Edgardo.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So my name is Edgardo Balanos, Recreation Supervisor. I believe the last time I was here, we were talking about the Youth Advisory Committee and the event that they were holding that was canceled unfortunately because of COVID. So I'll be talking about DC Act as well, but first, we want to talk about what we did during the summer for the teens with our Virtual Leadership Program. Or I'm sorry, our Volunteen Leadership Program, the Virtual Edition. So with me today, we have our staff, Matthew Joe, Chris Joe, and Patricia Samong. They were essential in having this program happen, the creative and just putting it all together. So thank them for being here. I want to share my screen. So typically, in our summers, we'll have the VLP Program, Volunteen Leadership Program. So what that was, for those who don't remember or don't know, was opportunity for teens to support our staff on our summer youth recreation sites. So we typically would have four, and our staff would run the program, activities, games, all kinds of field trips and special events. And the teens would then support them in volunteering their time. They would help assist staff to everything from help supervise the children to run the games themselves, set up breakdown of the events. But unfortunately, SRP had to shift as well, so we did the same thing. We shifted and went virtual. So to kind of give you a recap really quick. This is kind of the recap video of the whole summer, and we'll go into details after.
Welcome to the City of Daily City Recreation Commission meeting today on Tuesday, September twenty-two. Visit Daily City's virtual meeting website to watch the live stream of this meeting. And submit comment agenda, comments on agenda items online at the website. Bit dot Lee slash Daily City, September twenty-two. Please note, the virtual meeting website will only be available during the meeting. And we have a COVID nineteen announcement regarding public meetings pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order. And twenty-five, when he members of the Daily City Recreation Commission and staff. Will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream. And to submit comments through the virtual meeting website and or submit. Public comments via email prior to the public meeting. To submit a comment and writing, please email active at daily city dot org. And write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M. Will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members. And included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Comments received after four P M. Will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission. Members for the public meeting. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating. Should call the Office of the City Clerk at nine-nine-one-eight-zero-seven-eight as soon as possible. And this meeting is now called to order. And first, we'd like to um do the pledge to the flag.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
And next up on the gender vocal.
Chair Luna.
Present.
Vice Chair Landos. Commissioner Flamenco.
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Present.
Commissioner Pastor.
Present.
Great. And next is the approval of tonight's agenda. For September twenty-twenty. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Like enter the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
A second.
Yep, my second.
Great. And all those in favor, I.
I.
As next up, approval of our minutes from July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty, our last meeting.
If I can interject, I apologize there, the meeting was not a quorum, so my apologies, that was. My mistake on the agenda.
Okay, so we can cross that off the agenda. Moving on to the director's report.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to have two presentations, one both by Edgar de Balaños and his crew. The first one up is the Volantene Leadership Program, and both of these were on the agenda for July. Because we wanted you to kind of get a taste of what was happening in the summertime. But because our July meeting didn't have a quorum, we're bringing you some great news and great information in September. Eduardo.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So my name is Edgar de Balaños, Recreation Supervisor. I believe the last time I was here, we were talking about the Youth Advisory Committee. And the uh event that they were holding that was canceled unfortunately because of COVID. So I'll be talking about D C Act as well, but first we want to talk about what we did during the summer. For the teens with our virtual leadership program. Or I'm sorry, our Volantene Leadership Program, the Virtual Edition. So with me today, we have our staff, Matthew Joe, Chris Joe, and Patricia Samong. They were essential in having this program happen, the creative and just putting it all together, so. Thank them for being here. I want to share my screen.
And next up on the gender vocal.
Chair Luna.
Present.
Vice Chair Landos. Commissioner Flamenco.
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Present.
Commissioner Pastor.
Present.
Great. And next is the approval of tonight's agenda. For September twenty-twenty. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Like enter the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
A second.
Yep, my second.
Great. And all those in favor, I.
I.
As next up, approval of our minutes from July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty, our last meeting.
If I can interject, I apologize there, the meeting was not a quorum, so my apologies, that was. My mistake on the agenda.
Okay, so we can cross that off the agenda. Moving on to the Director's Report.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to have two presentations, one both by Edgar de Balaños and his crew. The first one up is the Volantene Leadership Program, and both of these were on the agenda for July. Because we wanted you to kind of get a taste of what was happening in the summertime. But because our July meeting didn't have a quorum, we're bringing you some great news and great information in September. Eduardo.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So my name is Edgar de Balaños, Recreation Supervisor. I believe the last time I was here, we were talking about the Youth Advisory Committee. And the uh event that they were holding that was canceled unfortunately because of COVID. So I'll be talking about D C Act as well, but first we want to talk about what we did during the summer. For the teens with our virtual leadership program. Or I'm sorry, our Volantene Leadership Program, the Virtual Edition. So with me today, we have our staff, Matthew Joe, Chris Joe, and Patricia Samong. They were essential in having this program happen, the creative and just putting it all together, so. Thank them for being here. I want to share my screen. So our, so typically, in our, in our summers, we'll have. The V L P program, Volantene Leadership Program. So what that was, for those who don't remember or don't know. Was opportunity for teens to support our staff on our summer youth recreation sites. So we typically would have four, and our staff would run the program, activities, games. All kinds of field trips and special events. And the teens would then support them in volunteering their time. They would help assist staff to everything from help supervise the children, to run the games themselves, set up breakdown of the events. But unfortunately, S Y R P had to shift as well, so we did the same thing. We shifted and went virtual. So to kind of give you a recap really quick. So this is kind of the recap video of the whole summer, and we'll go into details after.
I'm Patrick Chin, if you guys don't know me, and today we're going to learn about the basics of U.S. Government.
Here to help out staff and other volunteers to pass out food.
I want to be here for the community.
Okay. So essentially, staff came together and we decided we had to do something. We couldn't let the teens not have something in the summer. You know, after going through so many months of just virtual, you know, school. We weren't sure how willing they'd be to joining a virtual program, but we gave it a shot. And we ended up with twenty participants registering for this program. Typically, we would have over a hundred and twenty. I don't know, previous years, we've had a hundred and twenty-five, I think, last year, and it's been up there, so. Obviously, just like previous years, it's, we offer the opportunity, come and volunteer, get trained, and a lot of bonuses. But they're always us offering opportunities, nothing's ever forced upon them. It's up to the teens to take advantage of these opportunities. It's teaching them in life, there's going to be opportunities, they're out there, it's up to you to take advantage and take as much from that. So that's what we did this summer. We decided to kind of, you know, make the program a little bit smaller, so it was a four-week program, started first week of July, July sixth. And it went through July twenty, I think it was the twenty or thirty, I think the last Friday of July. What we did was weekly trainings, we gave them access to live streams, we had special events virtually, and then we offered opportunities for community service. So let's go with the first. So our weekly trainings, so staff, these were all staff-led, so Patricia, Chris, and Matt, and myself. They were the ones running all of these. They were broken up for training, so the first one was on leadership and communication. The second one was on team building. The third one was on diversity, where we actually had some special guests. Mr. Sorsman and Mr. Ombre from Westmore High School, they talked about their experience. With diversity and bringing diversity to schools and their experiences. So it was a great opportunity for two teachers to be talking to teens about their lives and how. What diversity meant to them and what it can mean, what it means to the youth, and it was a great discussion. The fourth training was about wellness, specifically mental health, mental wellness. We had Jonathan Portney, who was the new E D for the Daily City Youth Health Center. And he brought a friend from the YMCA, Jennifer Salerno, who is is trained to give trainings to teens regarding mental health. So again, it was another opportunity for the the teens to kind of just have a discussion. And she was just talking about mental wellness and what they can do to cope with stress, especially in these hard times for teens. Teens are impacted greatly. Just, you know, they're having their lives disrupted like everyone else, so. So we had live streams, so in the video, I won't play it again. But essentially, we did the first week, we did the Rubber Van Watermelon Challenge. Essentially, what we did is bought a watermelon, bought a bunch of rubber bands, and we put them on, and you saw what happened. This angle actually catches the watermelon exploding, and it almost hits my head, which is awesome. You can see in the video, I was jumping for joy because it was amazing. Our staff designed this shirt, and we actually were live streaming, and we had people that were watching guess how many rubber bands it would take. So we actually had, and we also did a shirt for the person that put the last rubber van that made it explode. Since it was me and David, so David won a shirt, and then we had two, one V L P actually. Won a shirt, and then another person that was watching on Instagram. Some of the other live streams we did, so our staff, Jessica Reyes is quite the artist, so she gave a digital drawing lesson. So it started as a one-time kind of explaining how to use different tools on the iPad. You know, how the pens work, the strokes, colors, things like that. And you can see the three drawings here were submitted from the participants. It went so well that we we tried another one. This time, she decided to have the teens learn how to draw, use different techniques to draw their names. Which is really cool, because after she did, she, some of the teens submitted their own, and then she ended up drawing out the names for the rest of them. I tried, I tried, I tried to write my own name, and it's not easy, so I let her do it, and she did an amazing job. And it actually became a shirt, so every year we give our staff or teens shirts so they can wear them with pride and show that they're part of the team. And for the first time ever, we actually had their names on the shirt. Some of them are modeling them, so you can see all our, so the staff that were involved and all the other, all the teens are on there representing, so everyone got a shirt. It's, it's pretty awesome, right, like? And it was like, it's very unique to the situation, so one in a lifetime, hopefully, that this ever happens. A pandemic like this, and it's a cool little token just to remember that it wasn't all bad, right? So some of the other live streams, so we did cooking demonstrations, so live cooking, so our staff, Brian Flowers. He, he first started with mac and cheese, and they went step by step. We prepared little kits with all the ingredients they would need. And we either delivered it to the the teens that couldn't come out and pick it up, and those that could pick up, they would, you know, we would. Bag them and have them ready for them, and on Fridays, they would actually cook together. Unfortunately for me, again, I was doing a special diet, and I couldn't enjoy it, but man, that food looked so good. And just watching these teens who don't think they can cook, actually learned some skills, and he was walking them through everything, waiting for them, being patient. It was awesome that to see that everyone else did it. We actually took that idea with, for D C Act, and we actually made pizzas together. So it all started because of this worked out so well. So thank you to Brian for, and Jessica previously for helping out with that. Our other staff, Cherry Kabulis, she did a tie-dye demonstration. Again, we had our kits ready, we, I delivered to those who couldn't come out and pick them up, and they created a tie-dye mask. Patrick here and wearing the shirt, he, it was his birthday that day, I think, and so we gave him his own tie-dye teen shirt, it's a unique, one-of-a-kind. So thank you to Cherry for that. On the Wednesday, the last Wednesday of July, which was the the twenty-eighth, was National Chicken Wing Day. And what a better day, what a better thing to do a hot chicken wing eating contest. So as you can see, we set up in the Courtyard Dodger Senior Center, socially distant tasting competition, so each teen got to taste. Wingstop's five hottest flavors. In the end, we were all left a little disappointed that it wasn't spicier. But yeah, I'll leave it at that. It was, it was a good time, everyone enjoyed themselves, and again, you made sure to stay socially distant. It was Patrick's birthday, and his sister actually had some cupcakes delivered to us. So we were able to celebrate not only Chicken Wing Day, but Patrick's birthday, one of our teens that has been with us for a long time, so that was awesome. So another part of the lessons was to actually give them workshops, so the trainees were one thing, these were workshops, so. We did a few, on the first, we did workshops for financial wellness, so most people don't realize how important. Starting early and knowing what the financial sector and having idea of what they're getting themselves into. How important that is, especially as you transition to an adult and you start to take care of yourself. It's important that we concentrate on that now as teens, so they have a good base, so that from there, they can make great decisions, so that. When they do hit adulthood, they're not disadvantaged. So these workshops, Mitch Oster with San Mateo Credit Union was amazing, he gave us, it was four lessons and two workshops, so. It was two, two-hour workshops. The first was just kind of talking about financial institutions, what a bank is, what a credit union is, how checks work, things like that. And the second part of that was talking about budgeting and saving and the importance of starting early. The next week, he came back and he talked about credit, what it was, how to use it, how to be responsible. And he talked about how that leads to identity theft, and how even as a teen, you should start worrying about that and being cautious about how you use your information out there, so. Let's see. Another workshop we did, myself and other staff, we did a work training, so kind of just a basic how to get a job. We get a lot of, you know, in the past, we've gotten a lot of applications from teams that just don't cut the bill, right? Because they don't have experience, they don't know how to fill out an application properly, so this was kind of the whole journey of. You're looking for a job, finding the reasons why you want a job. Everything you would have to do to get that job, and the next week is how to succeed at that job, now that you got that job, so. I took information from, from different sources, but it was mostly myself and other staff helping facilitate this training. We also had some of our teams, teens, actually give workshops, so Patrick, who I mentioned earlier. He talked about the basics of the U.S. Government and how important that is right now, and it was unbiased, it was just. It was simply laid out for them, it was just basics on U.S. Government, the, to different levels, from the local to the state, to the federal. And who's responsible for what, he highlighted important people in those positions. And it was great, and it gave him an opportunity to present to his peers, to give him that experience, and also showed that you as a teen. Can get involved and can give back to your peers, so that was great. We had, prior to my job training workshop, the Daily City Youth Advisory Committee. Had been planning on doing a job readiness workshop for the conference I got canceled. So they took that and they turned it into a workshop for those registered for V L P this year. And that was led by Gabby, Abby. And I think that was it, probably missing one of them, and Lauren, I think, anyway. I'm sorry if I missed you, if you were working on that one, but they were, they did a great job, they had a presentation. They showed different types of resumes, they had funny little clips to just kind of go over stuff. It was, it was a nice presentation. I even, in my presentation, I always, I was referring, they covered some stuff so well, I just referred them to go to that one to learn about certain things that they talked about, which is great. Makes my job easier. And the other component was the community service, so at Westlake, we have the Food Distribution Program provided by Second Harvest. And we have our wonderful staff and our volunteers that are helping, so this gave an opportunity for the teens to. Do what they do best and come out and volunteer for a good cause, so you can see some of the pictures here are of them. Loading the cars with the food. At the bottom, you see Patrick, he actually participated in a, in a cleanup with our staff, they went around Westlake Park, cleaning up garbage, pine cones. Extra, you know, large branches, piled those up. And then we have our group picture, it was the, the one time we had the most amount of teens in one place, so we took a picture. Usually, we do a yearly picture with all the teens, and this is as many as we can get in one picture in person, so. It was great because it was after a volunteer day. Our virtual special event, so we had a couple game nights led by Jessica Reyes. Our other staff, Alex Kensonade, did a watch party, they watched some SpongeBob and some other things. We had our summertime showcase, part two, we had one in June, and then we did another one in July. And we had a premiere of a V L P documentary that Matt and Chris put together, and this was kind of like. Documentary of what the teens had to go through, what they went through in V L P, how they enjoyed the program. Yeah, and I'll show you a clip of that after. So for the showcase, it was on, premiered, I'm sorry. It premiered on the thirty-first at seven, so a lot of the participants joined us. Live, and we, you know, they're all chatting and supporting each other, it was great. Our Facebook is there, so anyone that wants to take, check it out, can go check out the live, the stream, it's still there. It was, it was pretty great to see all these teens come together, they submitted their videos, Matt and Chris put them together, Alex hosted, and they. Yeah, and Patricia had an awesome music video, some quality production there, so check her out on there, her and her sister. And then, so this is, I'm going to show you quickly, the, this is just the promo for the documentary. The full documentary is on our Facebook page, so check it out, but just to give you a taste.
After being in V L P Virtual Edition, I, wait, yeah.
So the, there's a, it's a little documentary of what happened with this one, is we actually premiered it as well the following, it was August seventh. But prior to this documentary premiering, we showed one that Matt and Chris did two years ago. So it was cool to see the contrast of, of what it was and what it was this year. So and seeing their reactions and seeing that they still get, they still got something out of it, so. Let's see, I think that's it, so for anyone out there, make sure to, you know, like us and follow us. So on Facebook, Daily City Teens, on Instagram, D C Teens. We put all the amazing work that these guys do is on there, you can see what they go through. This is the final product of all the names, so a very, very huge thank you to all the participants this year. We really appreciate the fact that you showed us that we can do this, and it wouldn't have happened without them. So thank you, and because of them, we are, been inspired, and we're going to make sure that we have something during the school year, so normally. The V L P, the Volantene Leadership Program, doesn't have anything during the school year, but we're working on something. So that we can have something for the teens year-round, something like this, so. With that, any questions, comments?
I just want to say. I just want to say that this was amazing to see that you guys have been able to tap. To, I mean, I know that this whole virtual event landscape is not easy, and it's, it's like a milestone for you guys, and I'm excited to see how. This will evolve into your future events, but congratulations, I love that it was just such a good mix of topics. You know, like tactical and practical things, but still like making it fun and creative, and yeah, it looked really fun, so congratulations to you guys.
Eduardo, thank you again for showing the recap of the Volantene Program. It is great to see the, the interaction from the youth of. Taken on the role of presentations, and especially the U.S. Government one, where the gentleman, young, the gentleman Patrick was there speaking. It's just building his confidence to, to speak more. It's just building his confidence to, to speak more as he grows older in, in, in the, into the community and into the school. So thank you very much. It's a great job.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what everybody else said, no, like amazing job on the, on the virtual program. It's never easy for educators, especially after school educators, when you already have a ton of lesson plans that is already set up, but you have to pivot and shift and do everything virtually. So thank you for that. One thing I want to definitely give you guys praises for is allowing this as another outlet for for, for the young people here in Daily City. There's, there's been very various social gatherings when it comes to the, the teen program and and all the after school programs, but this could be another outlet for somebody to, to shine, show their talent. And like, man, I haven't even realized that all of a sudden students, young people are doing online classes for drawing on the iPad. Like that's something that I've been looking up over the summer. So definitely going to check out, if you guys have any of the stuff archived, then definitely going to check out the documentary as well, but shouts to you, Egardo, and all the volunteers this summer.
Yeah, it's all on, all our videos, all the recaps, everything's on Facebook and Instagram.
Yes, thank you for everything, Edgardo. And also I have a question, like the way teens get involved or knew about it, what, what way we did, we did use for teens to know about this program or how, how we are doing the social media market, marketing or propaganda, let's say.
Yeah, so we've, so we have our list, so we, our registration software. So usually VLPs come from our summer program. So as they grow older, it's kind of a cycle. So they get into our summer youth recreation program. They're there for as long as they are old enough. And then at a certain point, they transition and they sign up for a VLP. So during the summer. We had started because we started marketing this in, in February for the regular program. So at that point, we already had, I think we had close to fifty people registered. So it was, it's organic because it's people already know the program, but obviously we're on our social media. So we have a team dedicated Instagram and Facebook for teens. We did that. We sent out emails through our, you know, anybody that's ever registered in our program will get some type of contact saying, if you have a, a teen in your family, you probably got an email saying, hey, we have this program for teens. So once it came to that, we had canceled everything and we were trying to figure out what we can do. We reached out to those that already registered and said, hey, we're having this virtual program. I think maybe ten, ten people signed up from that group, initial group. The rest wanted refunds, so we kind of give them refunds. And then from there it kind of grew. We sent out more blasts. We started promoting it in June. That's when we had decided, yes, we're going to do something. So and it worked out because we had a small group. I know there were some people that were regretful. They contacted us after saying, I wish I had stayed on there. But obviously with anything new, you don't know what to expect. And again, yeah, just finished the last three months of their school year, four months of their school year. Virtually, they probably didn't want to be in front of a computer. And again, our program was set up to have, it was, you know, here and there. It wasn't a fixed schedule where you're in front of a screen for more than two hours at a time. It gave you an opportunity to, again, pick and choose. There was people that all they did were do the trainings on Mondays. And they came to volunteer on Thursdays and that was it. That was the extent of their, that was okay. That's what they wanted to get out of the program. That's what they got out of the program. So and in the future, we're planning on pushing it more. Especially for the school year. So we'll be working with our Youth Advisory Committee and help to get the word out. And we'll, we'll do more to get more people. Once we're kind of figure out how many, how much we can take on. Cause again, have we taken on more than what we took on? Probably the quality wouldn't have been what it was. We would have had to, you know, make some adjustments. So.
Yeah, Craig, that was going to be my suggestion to, to expand it to school district and obviously, you know, like now with the census, we will know more how many teenagers we're going to have in, in Daily City. So, but great job. Thank you.
Again, I just want to thank my staff, Matt, Chris and Patricia. Again, I, I can't do it all by myself. Like all the videos and stuff, I mean, that, that just highlights how great the program is. They just make it look better than I could have. But at the same time, they're the reason that the program is a success because they care and they involve themselves and they make sure that every, you know, all their ideas and everything. And I just say, let's go for it. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Balaños. And you're, you are all going to get a little tidbit of Matt and Chris's talent after our second piece. So the Daily City Youth Advisory Committee, Egardo is going to talk about with his crew. And then after that, we're going to show you a not on the agenda video that they did an amazing job on. And I'm so very proud of everyone. So this will just make it shine. So Egardo, Daily City Yak.
So as you know, I, last year, I showed up to a commission meeting with three young ladies who are our first three commissioners or youth advisory commissioners. So Patricia, who is our staff, was, was a commissioner. So those three ladies have since graduated high school. So want to congratulate them again. They've already started school. Think, I think Kalen is, I know Sam started, Kalen I think is starting soon. So with that, we had to find replacements. So the current committee members during the summer, they started to put together all the things that they needed to recruit three new members. So with the Youth Advisory Committee, it's a little different from all the other advisory boards. So the, the positions aren't necessarily assigned or by the council, the rec staff kind of has that ability to appoint. So what better way of having them learn the process, but by doing everything. So they literally, the four current members and the three past members worked together to put out a questionnaire to collect applications. We had over, I think over thirty six applicants apply for three positions, which was great. It made it a very difficult choice because we had quality candidates. But we, they did, and I say they, because they are the ones that decided, I just approved. Said, okay, yes, or yes. So we do have seven committee members. They have since met twice already. Our first meeting was a special meeting where they worked on their work plans, started to form subcommittees for those things that they want to accomplish this year. And then they had the regular meeting on the fifteenth where they finalized some of that. So they went over their bylaws to see if there was going to be any changes. They made, they finished off their work plan, which will be posted soon. And they have their committees. So now it's time for them to, they are going to be doing their own work. Again, they are students. They're all in high school. So they are work balancing that, you know, that work, school, extracurricular. So we're just starting, they're just starting off so that we're going to ease them into it. But I expect them to bring a lot of good things very, very soon. So for those that don't know, there's a, they do have an Instagram, Daily City Youth. So follow them on Instagram. So Daily City Youth. Coming up this year, we'll probably have more on our website. So on the Daily City website, there will be a page that, there is a page with minutes that'll be dedicated there, but there'll also be more information on what they're working on. So. Yeah, I was hoping that some, some of them would have joined us, but unfortunately they weren't, not available today. But you know, feel free to check out the agenda's minutes. And if there's anything that anyone wants to ask them, feel free to go through me or, you know, feel free to join our meetings. So they meet the third Tuesday of the month. And that, that's pretty much it. Oh, another shout out to Patricia who's been assisting with that too. So not only is she going to school, but she's actually staff. So she's helping out facilitate a lot of what's going on with DC Yak. So thank you, Patricia, for helping out with that. So any questions? And I hope that soon we'll be able to have them actually come on and present to you what they're working on and kind of give you a glimpse. So there's a lot of things that they've already started working. So if you go to Instagram, they've already partnered up with Boys and Girls Club, Mid Peninsula, helping out, talk about the census. So we're going to be shifting gears, talking about voter registration, the importance of that. Someone's working on suicide prevention. Someone's working on ethnic studies. We have moving down the line because our conference was canceled in March. They've now realized that we, because of our VLP program, they realize that they can actually do stuff virtually. So they'll be working on some virtual conferences for teens. What else? Those are just some of the things I can think of the top of my head, but there's plenty more to come and we, I can't wait to have you all have them share it to you. So. Any questions, comments?
Egardo, you mentioned the, the meeting dates. Is it the third Thursday or Tuesday?
Tuesday, sorry. The third Tuesday of the month at six thirty.
Thank you.
And our, yeah, our agenda is posted on our website. At least seventy two hours prior to our meetings. So if you have any public comments out there, you just make sure to follow instructions on the agenda.
Or, or maybe Denise, like we receive, you know, the city council meetings, maybe we can receive it in the mail. So we can assist as well sometime. I don't know if it's that possible.
You, I'm sorry, you want, what?
Oh, like, you know, we receive in the mail, the city counseling meetings. Maybe we can, can we receive a reminder for the city, for the youth council meetings as well? Maybe?
Yeah. Sure, I can send you a name.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Or move on to our surprise? So I'll give you real brief background. You all are aware that when the pandemic happened, we had to stop all programming in our normal sense. And a majority of what we are currently doing right now, we have teens, we have youth, but we're engaging them in a completely different capacity than we have in the past. Another branch that we do is our senior lunch program. Where we have staff preparing meals Monday through Thursday and cooking, actually cooking five meals for the seniors to pick up or get delivered on the following Monday. And they all get prepared and frozen and then bagged up and packaged up for that Monday. And we also are doing food distribution. And we have Thursdays and Fridays that we do that at. Again, Egardo alluded to Second Harvest being our partner in that and providing all of the food. So on Thursdays, every Thursday, we serve about five hundred clients. And on Fridays, the second and fourth Friday, we serve about five hundred. And then that's all at Westlake Park. And then we do one food distribution at Ceremony Center where we serve over a thousand of the community members. When we were communicating with Second Harvest, we wanted to do something different, something fun, something to engage the community on. And I believe it was Angela that brought it up. That he thought we should use the ingredients from Second Harvest and all the ingredients and create this cooking show. So Second Harvest thought it was a great idea. I said, please, let's do it. And then I didn't really talk about it anymore. And then Romeo and Egardo are coming back going, we're having it on September fifth and you need to find judges for it and all of this. And so we got two reps from Second Harvest, myself, the mayor was there and then one of our staff was a judge. And then we had David Zetzer, Opal Fuller, Brian Flowers and Angelo Gnaucio as the cooks. Or the chefs, I should say. And they paired off into two teams and then competed against one another. And you're going to see a preview of that, but you can also see the whole entire piece on our Facebook page. So before they go into this, I want to say that I am so very proud of the Recreation Division and the Library Division and getting out there and being a part of the community in a way that we probably never have before. But the creativity and the collaboration in general senses of what we're doing has just been amazing. And every person has such great talent and I am so, so, so proud. But Chris Joe and Matt Joe, right here. You're going to see some holy mackerel, some amazement going on. So without further ado, I give you sliced.
One hour to prepare two meals to all our judges. Get ready to find out what you can make using produce from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley. Here in Daily City Rec, present sliced.
So the full video is already out, the first episode and, you know, talks are, they're probably going to do another one. Yeah. So we're working on it. But yeah, it was, it was fun to host. It was fun to like be on scenes and direct people and tell like, man, Chris, hey, I think we need a shot of this. And they're already on top of it, but and just, it was a it was this weird, it's this, we, this is how we work. It's like we get put in a position where we want to do something and everyone comes together and does their part. And that's just how recreation does it. I mean, there's no other way to say it. We just make it happen. And we're fortunate again to have amazing talent. And everything just fits. So it was a easy, not easy, but it wasn't as hard as it looks, but but kudos to everyone that was part of it. It made me feel like I missed my calling. There's a
Edgar, Edgar, I just want to say that the next time, please, can, can the councils be the judges?
We'll have to put you on a list. I think we already have a list of people that want judges to try the food. So we got, we have people that want to participate too. So, but we'll see what we can do.
Yes.
You look sharp dressed in black.
Thank you guys for the effort. It did look, it did look delicious already.
Oh, it was good. It was good. Delicious.
Don't tell me.
I won't tell you, but I gained ten pounds, I'm sure.
Egardo, you do the line, you've been sliced.
No, no, I don't. Close to chopped, right? Boy, if you watch the end, I don't know, if you ask Matt and Chris, I'm probably the, the best person for bloopers at the end. So they kept it clean on the bloopers, but watching the end, there's a part where I do the slice or actually hit my hand on the counter. So, so you see that, it's pretty funny.
Thank you to the crew and everybody who was involved in there. They look like really fun. I feel envy already that I was not part of it.
Hey, next time you had that event, maybe go out and have a little audience over there cheering you guys on. In some stands.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out a socially distance in that, but we can, we'll figure something out.
Yeah.
We did.
Thank you, Egardo. Thank you, Matt, Chris. I mean, this is the epitome of recreation, right? You have a great idea and you have a team and a family that surrounds you and just make it happen. Figure out a way. So thanks, guys.
Yeah, well, now that we're in the red, right? We've just transitioned to red, the color red. We've just transitioned to red, the color red, San Teo County, way to go. So hopefully things will start slowly open up for us and you know, we don't want to do too much too soon, but yeah, just excited to keep moving forward and keep providing great opportunities for the community. So that is it for the director's report.
Great, all exciting announcements. So thank you so much. And I'm definitely going to subscribe to all your channels and make sure I watch, watch them. Moving on to commissioners reports, do we have any commissioners reports today?
I don't have anything to report today, but I just wanted to see if we could take an opportunity to check in on like updates for like recreation facilities, like the parks, jungle gyms, things like that. And I know everything's always pivoting and shifting, but just something quick, just to give the community like an idea of what's going on.
So currently, all of our facilities are closed and will remain closed until we potentially get into the orange area. Our parks are open. Our tennis courts just opened on Friday. And as I sit in on this commission meeting with you, I see the lights of the tennis courts ablaze. So that means people are out there still playing. So those are open. Our fields are not open for reservations at this time. But there are people out there doing random acts of getting together. Yes, not in, not in a authorized way, but they're just interacting. And that's really about it where we are. The playgrounds are still closed and secured. And that's basically where we're at with recreation.
Do you think we have an area where we can do the the movie drive through, like driver, driving movie theater when we are in better color?
So we're, I have a couple announcements that you see on the agenda. We currently aren't going to do a movie one. We wanted to wait until somebody else kind of tested it out before we started it. But we're doing kind of a drive through kind of deal where the community can come out and do something safe and social distance and things like that. And hope, hoping to transition to other special events down the line where we can engage with the community. But right now, we don't have the space to do something. And we don't want to do something just we want to be thoughtful about how we're doing it and presented in a way that keeps everybody safe.
Denise, several meetings back, we had some youth from the community talk about skateboard parks, skate parks. Have you gotten any feedback from their research on sharing more ideas on placement or or where that is currently at?
No, we have not ever since the pandemic hit that kind of was put on hold.
Okay.
I do know that the basketball court was the other avenue of concern, outdoor basketball court. And actually, where we are in Westlake, hoping in the next fiscal year, they're going to transition it into three courts, a pickleball court and a basketball court. So that's kind of in the plan, but when it comes to fruition, we're not quite sure.
Okay, thank you.
And I wonder if we are providing something for mental illness. Right now, there is a lot of people that are suffering depression and suicidal, like something mindfulness, classes or something that we're providing for people to get connected online or any source to keep mentally trying to keep everybody mentally stable as much as possible in this pandemic. I don't know if you, you know, something.
I know that our focus is our senior population and making sure that they are safe and healthy. And we have been doing friendly calls to our seniors, making sure if there's any resources or anything we can provide to them, that we can do that in a positive way and work with our partners, whether it be Heart or some other organization within our community. And that's been our focus. I'm not sure Stephen or Leilani, if there's any other opportunities for wellness.
There was there, and I'm looking for the notice I put in one of our recent newsletters. It's it's from the American Red Cross and they offer virtual care for families who it's specific to families who have lost loved ones to COVID nineteen. So that was a recent resource that came to us through the Red Cross. And I can, I can get you that information through Denise.
Thank you. Also for moms, you know, that are struggling with homeschooling, losing their jobs, staying at home and you know, or also we have gained a lot of pounds during pandemic because we have been staying at home. Maybe we can provide, I don't know, some classes, virtual classes for people to exercise or something from from Daily City. Or I don't know, I'm just brain brainstorming.
We, Edgardo could probably speak more to it because he's been updating things, but we are doing a virtual class right now on Tuesdays, doing nine thirty and ten thirty. And it's not senior focused, is it, Edgardo? Anybody can join?
Anyone can join, but it is fifty plus. That's the target. But if you go to, we do have, there is a inkling of classes popping up virtually. I know Leslie Tobridge is working on having more classes and more instructors to provide virtual. But it's, it's kind of a balancing act of how much we can actually offer. And it's become in her area, it's become a little bit different because now people realize they can just offer virtual directly. So they really don't need to provide a class. They don't need a facility through the Recreation Department to have their class. So some of, some, some are doing a good job of kind of helping out still, but we do have on our, on our, if you go to YouTube and if you go to your Facebook, the Daily City Rec, we have what's called Daily City Rec at Home, and we have a myriad of stuff for parents and other people, fitness ideas. They're all broken down. So if you go to Daily City Rec on YouTube, we have playlists of different categories, things like that. So and it's really universal. So there's exercise and fitness and there's a, there's a Tai Chi demonstration. There's there's all kinds of stuff that started in March and we've kind of added to it. So.
Thanks. Also, one more thing, you know, for, for example, there are games, virtual games where kids can get connected. I wonder if there is a possibility that our kids can get connected through to virtual games to play in their houses because most of the kids are stuck, you know, at home and they cannot even go to the park. And I wonder if there is a way that we can connect kids around Daily City to play together. And eventually, when we're ready to go out and they can meet and play as well. But I don't know if we can provide a way to, for them to get connected to.
The only offerings we currently have right now is what Edgardo spoke of, the Daily City Rec at Home. We are partnering with school districts that we have our after school youth recreation program at. There are four schools. And we are going to be engaging them in called Daily Fun. It's one hour a day.
It's an hour a day from four thirty, Monday through Friday. So kind of similar to what I was talking about, the rec at home stuff. Staff is going to be engaging the youth, using the videos that we've already made. And then they are going to be actually showing the video and then they're actually working with the kids in real time to make sure that, you know, to get them engaged and to do that. So yeah, so we do have something. It's going to start in October. So Gina, who's our, working on getting that to fruition, she's close. So it's going to be going out soon. So you'll see some more stuff.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Denise, don't mean to jump from topic to topic, but is there any follow up from a couple of meetings ago, we passed on the the master plan, the Recreation Master Plan to City Council? Is there any updates on that?
Then you mean the through Public Works?
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that master plan. I'm Stephen, I'm.
Yeah, we, gosh, I can't remember the date of the meeting. It was very recent. City Council was presented with the plan and our consultants were there as well. And they accepted and adopted the Parks and Open Space Master Plan as it's called. So now we're in that phase where it's, we have to start implementing on some of the recommendations in that plan. And then we're just at the start of that right now.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Great. We can move on to announcements and communications.
Thank you. Edgardo, did you want to chime in about Latinx? Before I?
Sure. So September fifteenth to October fifteenth is Latinx Heritage Month here in Daily City. On the fourteenth, the, we had the proclamation at our city council meeting. Where myself and one of our Youth Advisory Committee members accepted the proclamation on behalf of everybody. So we are, we started the video on the fifteenth. I had a little introduction talking about the month. And then I was followed up with my salsa recipes, which are, you know, I don't know, if you try them, pretty good. And then on Saturday, we posted, Chris did a mashup of the last two years that we had our event at City Hall to just to kind of, you know, re-inspire people. So hopefully people read and comment on what they'd like to see when we are able to have our celebration back next few weeks. So tomorrow, we're doing a story time with Sarah from the library. So it'll be a bilingual that'll be going up soon. We're collecting some videos from Youth Advisory Committee member. She's going to show how her mom make pupusas. And then we have a few other things that we're coming up with that we're going to post throughout October fifteenth, just to celebrate the month. Just little things. So just little highlights. And we're going to be sharing things that other people are doing too.
Thank you. Coming up on October tenth, Saturday, October tenth, we are having our virtual edition of the Casa Yahan Sa Daily City. It's will be at one PM. It will be on Facebook, YouTube and Kumu. And you can follow us at Daily City Rec on Facebook and Instagram, and also follow us at the app Kumu at Casa Yahan Sa Daily City. And so we're excited about that. It's going to be, I believe, an hour long with just all kinds of fun going on, singers and performers and things like that. So that's the Casa Yahan Sa Daily City. And then we will be having our drive through truck retreat event on Friday, October thirtieth at six thirty. Around six thirty at Westlake Park here. Other events that are within the truck retreat that are happening around the same time, beginning on October first, I should say, there's going to be a house decorating contest that we judge by our staff, a pet costume contest, which will be online voting on who gets the most likes. And then a Halloween adventure kit will go out Saturday morning with the Saturday morning Zoom. And the adventure kits like Edgardo spoke of with the tie dye and things like that, the summer youth recreation program, once they had to shut down their camp, they transitioned into a virtual program. And then at the beginning or the end of every week, they provided the kids with an adventure kit. And that kit, they had interaction through Zoom and things like that. And it really kept them engaged, similar to what Edgardo and Matt and Chris showed on the video where staff engaged them on Zoom and they were all doing the same thing based on those adventure kits. So those will go out as well. And everything will be available as of October first online. You have to register for the truck or treat and the different events in order to be able to participate. And that's just to give us a headcount of the supplies that we will need for each of the different events. So that's what's going on.
Great. Thank you so much. At this time, are there any public comments?
I'm checking right now online. Let me see. There is not.
Okay, great. Thank you. If there are no other comments or announcements, this meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty seventh at seven PM. Thank you, everybody.
You, thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Stay well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Stay safe, everyone.